Good morning, everyone. Let's stand for a moment of silence in the place of allegiance. And now the pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call today's meeting to order. First order of business will be the three little minutes, August eleventh. Commissioners thoughts, comments?
I'm sorry, that should be August eighteen.
Excuse me, eighteen, correct? Thank you for the correction. August eighteen. The motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Say.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next up, commissioners reports or comments. Vice President Baker, would you begin?
Uh, sure. Good morning, everyone. Hope you all had a great week, great weekend, and I hope you're looking forward to the Labor Day weekend coming up. If you travel, please be safe and have a great time. Also, it was brought to my attention on property transfers. When properties are transferred within the municipalities, those transfers aren't reported to the municipalities. So I think it would be important if we would see that when properties are transferred within the municipalities, that that municipality would get information as to the properties being transferred, I get, and who they're being transferred from and to. So I'd like to, I guess Todd Hershey would handle that, but I'd just like to know how we would go about making that happen.
We want informed.
They want informed, yes.
They do, yeah. Put that on the lap of the legal staff.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Commissioner Kiefer, comments, please?
Sure. I was contacted by the town of Clear Spring. They, the town's been working on a project to honor their veterans, as many of their towns have been. And there's also involves banners with the veterans' name, rank, air of service, and having displayed on poles. And the town of Clear Spring is asking that we, um...
Help them, excuse me?
We help them similar to how we've helped our other communities to have known our veterans. Veterans-related project. And the amount they're asking for is eighteen thousand dollars, and I know that is less than what we've given to some towns for their projects. So if we need that as a formal request, throw a letter from the town. I know they were going to approach us during our town, county meeting, which did not happen because it could have been. So that money typically in the past has come out of our contingency fund. I know we gave Hancock and I think it was the Vietnam Veterans Memorial here in Hagerstown each twenty thousand dollars. So Clear Spring's asking for eighteen thousand. They have a good partnership between their town and the, um, the American Legion, I believe, who will help with maintenance and taking down the banners and up going forward.
Yeah, I also talked to Dr. Hallbaker about that back two weeks ago, and they were trying to negotiate a way they could work with the garden club in rotating their banners and historic banners. So that would be a great project that I'd support. It's just I think they're all in the middle of figuring out what they want.
Yeah, well, I spoke to Juanita Grimm this morning, and I think there's a plan in place for polls, and the request is eighteen thousand dollars. So that's something we can bring up on our agenda next week if need be, or the next time we meet, but I would like to...
Just as long as they have it in writing, everybody okay with seeing a letter from them?
Okay. So we just want, we just want a lot of rest of...
The use, yeah.
To use for our vote.
Mm-hmm. Okay. The other thing I have, as Commissioner Baker mentioned, Labor Day weekend is coming up. Good time to honor those who work and are in the workforce, and this past year's been a particularly trying time for the workforce. Many people deemed essential personnel had to work under potentially hazard conditions with the virus. Some people still are without work. So let's keep those people in our thoughts and prayers as well. People, whether you have a job or you don't have a job right now, are struggling over Labor Day weekend. So let's just remember everyone in our community, those who are working hard and those who are trying to find work or return to gain full employment. Remember that when we're out enjoying Labor Day weekend.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Commissioner Myrmoset?
I have no comments at this time.
Commissioner Wagner?
Uh, good morning. Now, I just want to remind, sort of what Commissioner Kiefer just said. Labor Day, I wish everybody has a happy Labor Day, and I'm glad the pooches plunge at Marty Snook Halfway Park will be coming up on September eighth from six to eight. That's always a fun time. I think people need fun things to do because they've been either cooped up or scared to take part in some activities, even with social distancing, distancing in mass. So I think anytime we can get out and do something entertaining, I think that's always a big turnout at that. I think people are welcome to come and observe. But anyway, that's, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. First, I also like to bring up the nine eleven remembrance in the park ceremony that the city has. I'm not quite sure of their plans for that. That's always a, a good event to honor our fallen heroes from nine eleven. Second, I want to congratulate soon-to-be Senator Paul Quarterman. Later this afternoon, he'll be sworn in as the senator, and I wish him all the luck and congratulations and all the best to him. I want...
Today's his birthday?
Uh, today and sworn in on his birthday. Can't forget either...
Happy birthday, Paul.
Can't forget either one now, Kenny. So, and I want to thank all the students and teachers and parents, Board of Education, with first day of school, trying times, but it looks like they're all trying to do their best for the students and the community. So thank you for that. With that being said, that ends my report, and we will start with, there's no staff today, correct?
Correct.
Okay, then we will go to Salary Study Commission. Kendall, please come forward, introduce the matter.
Good morning. This agenda item from the Salary Study Commission required by law was first presented on August eighteenth. We are back for the senior class to have the board appoint the at-large Washington County resident and then also appoint all of the named individuals to the Salary Study Commission so that we can constitute the commission and schedule its first meeting. The first request would be if the board has made a determination as to its at-large appointment, we would need to have that person's name to add to the group.
So, do we have...
I had mentioned to the commission, Jason Hose had volunteered to do it. He's a local guy, farmer, realtor, just a good upstanding citizen. So, I mean, that's who I recommended, and I, I didn't get any objections, I don't think.
I second Jason Hose at that large point.
Other commissioners, have any comments? Everybody's okay with that? All in favor of Jason Hose being our nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Five oh, thank you for that. Next?
So then the next up would be, I request a motion to appoint the listed individuals, including Jason Hose, as the board's at-large appointee to constitute the Salary Study Commission as presented.
Do you, would you like us to name the individuals or just as presented?
I think as presented would be sufficient since they're named in VR.
I make, I make the motion for the Salary Study Commission as stated.
I'll second.
Commissioners, any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, five oh. Thank you very much. Next up, citizens' participation during open meetings. Tom Brown, please come forward, introduce the matter. Earl, whatever. Tom, you're fine.
Good morning, Tom Brown, emergency manager. This morning, I'd like to discuss and get a consensus as to how citizen participation during Board of County Commissioner open meetings will be handled while the COVID-19 pandemic continues. Just a brief history, in March twenty twenty, public meetings were canceled as gatherings of people could cause a health risk to citizens and county staff due to the COVID-19 pandemic. When commissioner meetings resumed, they remained closed to public attendance. Citizen comments were received and continue to be received via email, mail, or telephone calls to the county clerk. Over the course of the last few weeks, several commissioners expressed an interest in determining whether it was safe to allow the public to resume in-person comments, even if the practice were modified from its traditional nature. Staff felt there were two options available for the board to consider. The first option, which is recommended from a public health perspective, is to continue with the current modifications that are in place. Citizens would have the ability to call, write, or email the county clerk with their comments, which they would like to have heard in open session. Second option is to allow a small number of citizens to appear in person individually during a scheduled agenda time. This option would allow for no more than three to five citizens to make comments. Those citizens making comments would be required to schedule an appointment and would only be permitted into the meeting individually at their scheduled time. They would be required to leave after making comment. The ability to comment would be on a first-come, first-served basis until available slots were filled. After discussion, staff did not believe it was feasible to schedule citizen comments periodically throughout the meeting because the agenda may move more quickly or slower than scheduled.
On option one, what would trigger that we move away from that to like an option two or expand? What would be the statistics we'd need to see?
So, um, right now, again, the state CDC are all encouraging teleworking, employees to telework as much as possible. I think seeing some of the guidance from the CDC and the state change in that direction would then indicate that, you know, maybe we should allow the public back into some of the buildings.
Tom, you, you, it looks like you just reckon, you recommended option one, is that correct? Would you s...
Uh, yeah, based, uh, from a public health perspective, that is the recommendation, as leadeth the way.
As being, uh, the voice of controversy sometimes, what would, what would be the problem if you brought one or two in staggered? I mean, there's one, two, three, four, five in the gallery now, all wearing masks and social distancing is... Not that I'm advocating that, I'm just curious, would that be...
So you're, you're, you're bringing the public inside the building?
I got you.
Even if it's two or three or however many is decided at a time into the building? You know, with the county employees and so forth, county employees have, have the restrictions in place with the mask wearing and so on and so forth. And, you know, the public would too, but, um, you know, these are people that they're coming in from, we don't know where.
Yeah, I, I get that. I'm just sort of curious, and we had an issue, I don't think it's a secret, that it creates a lot of problems and we have an issue in this building.
Yeah, I mean, you, you're potentially exposing the employees that work in this building.
Tom, do we, um, monitor where our employees are when they're not at work? I mean, just to play devil's advocate, I, I understand your point. You don't know if someone outside who's not an employee of the county was maybe in a state or a city with high COVID rates, but we don't, we don't regularly monitor our employees for that also, do we?
No, I mean, I, I have no idea where any other county employee is when they're off time. Hopefully, they're all being responsible individuals.
But you would be expanding the risk, is what the answer is.
It's all about lowering your risk as much as you can. Obviously, by letting citizens come into the building, you're raising the risk of potential exposure in this building.
I, I think there's a way that we can do it. If they sit outside until they're being called inside, we've asked them, we can temperature check them, we can ask them if they've been in, if no, been in contact with it. I mean, we have, everybody here goes to the grocery store, everybody here goes to Walmart or Lowe's or anything like that. And I know just last week, we were advocating to have some type of in-school participation for students. And I think it's, you know, and I'm not saying a hundred percent because I don't agree with that, but where we were advocating for some sort of in-class work, I think if we did three people, scheduled it, one in, one out, there's a safe way to do it. I, I don't like the, the answer of no, there's always a, a safe way to do it. I think interaction with our citizens is important.
Commissioner Baker?
Well, my two cents worth. I think we've come a long way. I think we still have a long way to go. I think things are starting to look up. Why couldn't we bring this back in two weeks and see if we can make an adjustment in two weeks? We don't have a meeting next week, obviously, and schools are going to start opening up, so things are moving forward. And, I mean, and I want citizens to have their participation time, and if it was a, a must-participation that the citizen needs to get in here, they could make a call, and then we could say yes, let them come in or something like that. But I think we've come a long way. We've got a, a long way to go. Everything is positive for us at this point. I don't know, for me, I would be okay bringing it back in two weeks to, to see if we can move forward.
Terry, Commissioner Baker, run up here, and you want to start this off slow, but to begin implementing it?
Well, I would like, for me, I'd like to wait another two weeks. We don't meet next week anyhow.
Okay.
So we could talk about this in two weeks to see if we wanted to move forward because there may be some new news coming out, and that's just my thought.
Commissioner Kiefer?
We just heard last week that our, our positivity rate is at all-time low statewide in Washington County.
Yeah.
Much lower than the average county in the, in the state. Again, I'm not saying we open it up and let everybody in, but I think it's a, it's a step forward. It doesn't mean we have to start in two weeks, but I think we should be able to...
I'm not saying start letting citizens in in two weeks. I'm just saying revisit in two weeks, and then we can possibly...
I, I think we shouldn't delay. I think at our next meeting, we schedule time slots for citizens to come in. You know, I, I appreciate your concerns, Commissioner Baker, but I, I don't want to be that person who decides, well, yeah, your, your concern's important enough to come before the commissioners and yours isn't. So I don't think we want to screen what a citizen's concern might be to every individual. Their own concern is different. I don't want to delay this anymore. I, I think the week after, when I brought this up, I know we've each talked about it from time to time, but the week I brought it up, the week before, in our gallery, we had maybe two dozen county employees. I think we need to make an effort to allow our citizens to come in and comment. As Commissioner Monishmit said, we were advocating for children to return to the classroom just last week. And always, as always, if a citizen doesn't feel comfortable coming in, we're not making anyone come in. They can still call or email us, and, and they do do that. Our local municipalities, I think, have set a good standard with allowing citizens to come in and talk during their meetings. I think we should be just as accessible. If, if J.C. Penney, if Lowe's, if those stores are deemed safe enough to shop in because it's essential you need clothes or, or the grocery store, government, you know, access to your government, I think, is important too. So I, I would support option two.
The only thing I'd like to add as a suggestion is if we, since it is a first-come, first-served basis, if we have somebody that's on the, the panel every single week, but it's delaying somebody else, that we make sure that we're hearing new people.
Yeah, that's one of my questions, uh, in this plan, action plan that we're going to undertake, what's first-come, first-served? When do we start? What's the rules? Do we have stuff written out there, the six-foot spacing? Do we have chairs? And how many are we going to allow for an appointment?
Earl, what do you, you haven't, you haven't spoken yet. I want to hear from Earl.
I would, I, I would, obviously, the safest option is to continue doing what you're doing, and really, anything. And you can do it safely, bringing individuals in, but it goes back to the old adage of the devil's, the devil's in the details. In that, my, my only caution would be that what we know about the virus is that indoor environments are the worst environments you can be in as far as transmission. And so obviously, you're in an indoor environment. You really need to look at the number of people that you're allowing in. You need to really look at the length of time that the individuals are going to be here, because when you really look at close contact, the standard right now is six feet. There's some question as to whether that really should be more as far as a distancing perspective. But there's also the concept now that's emerging of aerosolized transmission, which typically, if you call for sneeze, there, there's droplets that you spew out. But also just with talking, breathing, now there's a lot of emerging evidence that supports the notion that you can have aerosolized particles that linger in the air for up to an hour. So that's a whole different dynamic that, that we're looking at. So I would caution, my, my recommendation respectfully would be to continue doing what you're doing. If you move in the direction of opening it up, I would just be very cautious about how many people you're letting in. Because again, even if you have, um, county staff, there are staff that, that you have more of a controlled environment. If I come in as a John Q. citizen, you have no idea where I've been, you have no idea down the road, even if I've gotten sick. Because from a contact tracing perspective, if I come in today, present, I test positive tomorrow, when we contact trace that person, they may not say that they were at a commissioner meeting. We may not have any idea. So, yes, it can be done safe, safely, but the safest option is continuing to do what you're doing. The sa, safer option is continuing to do what you're doing, but as you move forward with allowing citizens in, as Tom stated, you, you ratchet up your risk. So not saying it can't be done safely, it can be done, but you just have to, it, it really goes back to risk assessment.
One point I'd like to make, and credit Kristoff Hartford on this, has been screening staff for coming in for reports. If there's something of not immediate, uh, action, we've asked them to email or contact the commissioners by phone to do that and only arrive in here just to limit the number of staff in here at any time. Then we've had two recent incidents in the area with Hagerstown having to close down their first-floor building because of COVID. And then this, this past week, the register of wheels went in off contact tracing, and they were all, I guess, clear not being positive, but they had a client that was negative, which caused some concern to disinfect that whole area. So one of the things I'm going to say right now, I'm for gradually trying to bring the people back in. Excuse me, also need to emphasize that some of them don't have a problem emailing or calling us, but it is our goal to eventually have an action plan to start bringing people in, whether it's by appointment, five to six. So somewhere, I would like to see in writing that plan of what we're going to do and allow, especially on the rules on who first come, first served, and can you come back the second day in a, a week and around bump people? And we want to be fair to all with the limited amount. So that's my suggestion. Basically, in agreement with everybody, but to implement it two weeks from now, I'd like to see the written plan first to approve it.
And I think that, you know, one of my concerns too, and I, and I, you know, forgive me for not knowing all the details. I may be speaking out, out of turn, but one of my concerns too is, is that the fairness in opening it up. If you open it up to the public for public comment, and, and this may be even a question for Kirk, what happens when there's a public hearing? You know, my, my thought would be, in a public hearing situation, everybody needs to maintain their presence in the room to hear what's going on. I may be wrong about that. That, I would be concerned with that. If you have a hot topic that you're going to have a lot of people show up for, and they pack the gallery, um...
Well, I don't think that's what we're talking about, is open up for the public.
Okay.
No, this would just be...
Just for public comment, okay.
And I, and I agree with you. I think there's ways to limit it one at a time. And I, Jeff, I agree with you. I think if we came back with specific instructions on how it's going to run next week, and then we can vote on that next week what the, the specific instructions are, and maybe we can have dialogue over the week on, on what, what that is. But, I mean, your comment about, you know, this is the safest, but well, we could be safer if we, you know, did this online, and we've chosen to do this. So we, you know, we've already taken the step, and I think we need to be constantly moving at a slow step forward. And that, you know, and if, if all of a sudden we break out, then yes, we take a step back.
Yeah.
But I think there's a safe way to do it.
Yeah, I think we've demonstrated from being online to slowly coming in here. And the only thing I want to mention about wearing masks or being safe, that a lot of people, I had a conversation this, this morning, a lot of us have underlying illnesses that people don't know about that could lower our immunity. So if you're healthy, you don't have a clue about all the other things, but I, I think we move forward by meeting in person, and I'd like to see a written action plan on how we begin moving forward, bringing the citizens in for comment and the process in which we select them. And is there any legal boundaries that we might be violating by limiting, or is acceptable that we're slowly moving forward back to?
You don't have to have citizens' participation at all. There's no legal requirement that you have citizens' participation, so...
But I think it's important, everyone here. I haven't heard anybody say no to that.
Now, what I'd like to see is, is Tom and Earl, maybe, for the next meeting, have what they think is a safe plan for, let's just hypothetically say, three, four, five, what they think's a safe plan, and we have that, and we can then vote for the, to start. That's, that's sort of what I'd like to see.
We have it in writing. We know what we're talking about.
And I think a couple of things that can be done. I mean, we make sure that there's a sanitized station right outside, so they walk in the door, we check the temperature, make sure their hands are sanitized. I think we have a form, just like every single camp had this summer, is we had a sign every Monday that you've not been in contact with anybody, you've not been in, known contact with somebody with COVID-19, then, you know, you've not felt sick, you don't have a fever, all those things. So we're, we're doing what we can to make sure that these people, if they're coming in at their designated time, they get, I don't know, five minutes, usually three minutes, three minutes in, and then they're, they're back out. And to, we have the other door here, if they want, need to come in from this entrance and leave that entrance, so that again, they're, you know, doing what a lot of our stores are doing, entrance and exit, we can, there's ways to limit it.
I, I might also add, if I could, I think we've done a good job. I, I think we can do this in a safe manner. I know the safest option is always to do nothing, and, and that's not a criticism. That's just the safest option with anything. Don't travel, don't, don't, stay home would be the safest option, but we are a government... Stay home would be the safest option, but we are a government entity and I do think we need to hear from our citizens, and that's absolutely correct. I remember from Mako that this is a public, um, hearing, or this is an opportunity for citizens to hear us. It's not necessarily an opportunity for us to hear the citizens. But I think we've set that precedent that we do want to hear from our citizens rightfully so. I think we can be safe and, and even, you know, while I wouldn't want to say your comment, we don't want to hear your comment, we do want to hear. We can keep it county business related, so if someone wanted to come in and talk about a state issue, a federal issue that we have no control over, you know, maybe we could limit it to those issues which we have control or say over.
All right, um.
But, um, I, I don't want to see this drag on any further. Usually, you know, I've not been in politics very long, but when you delay something, that's a, that's another way to kill it without.
What I'm hearing then, the commissioners want some type of action plan?
Kill it. I think we're just trying to move forward with a, a plan.
That's fine. We've been vocal for.
Yeah, we should, we should have something in writing telling us what the plan is. So that's what I would suggest. Um, we come forward with an action plan where we're allowing citizens to come in to participate and how that would be done. And how we would select those who speak.
And you want that presented at the next meeting?
That'd be nice.
As soon as possible. I think having it in writing makes us look more professional and that we don't deviate from a plan. And that plan can always expand as we see our statistics locally lower, and we could eventually go to opening it up to everyone. Commissioners, everybody okay with that? Make wrong agreement in general? Okay, there's, there's your assignment. Thank you. Next up, COVID nineteen executive order enforcement overview, overview. Tom and Earl, introduce yourself in the matter.
Earl Stender, Health Officer from Washington County Health Department.
Tom Brown, Emergency Manager. Uh, again, an overview and discussion regarding enforcement activities of the governor's executive orders. Uh, throughout the COVID nineteen pandemic, the governor of the state of Maryland and the Secretary of Health have issued a number of executive orders in an effort to keep all Marylanders safe and combat the COVID nineteen virus. Recently, the governor issued instruction to local executives charging the local health department, local law enforcement, local emergency management, local liquor board with enforcement of all executive orders. Local health department, local law enforcement, local emergency management, local, uh, liquor board met by way of teleconference to set up reporting and enforcement processes. Uh, complaints for non-compliance are received either through the local health department or one of the participating agencies. Local health department compiles all complaints received, including those from the state call center, uh, and education is the primary component of the enforcement effort. Uh, this is accomplished by making contact with reported, uh, establishments by either email or phone, provide them with some information. Uh, continued offenses by the same business results in a letter of compliance being issued, and they are being advised that if they do not correct efficiencies, they may be ordered to close. Focus of the enfor- uh, enforcement efforts to gain compliance through education, uh, in an effort to protect all citizens and visitors, and ensure that all businesses within Washington County can continue to remain open. Uh, biggest reason that this is brought forth as an overview and as, uh, if there's any discussion, is there's been some questions over the past week or two, uh, about what is, you know, how enforcement's being done in Washington County. Uh, the biggest thing that I wanted to emphasize is the fact that, uh, these, uh, agencies that are being tasked by the governor's office to enforce these executive orders have met in Washington County, are collaborating, are working together, uh, and that there is a plan in place, and the plan is not go out and find as many businesses as we can and shut them down. It's go out and educate these businesses, uh, so that they can remain open and that all the businesses can remain open.
And I would add that, um, to date, since the start of the pandemic, we've had about nine hundred and fifty complaints that we've handled. Uh, we've closed two businesses. Uh, one, uh, continues to remain closed and one was actually only closed for about twenty-three hours, almost a day. Um, one of the other things that, uh, is being talked about at the state level is, um, obviously there's already an MSP tip line that's out. Uh, Tom mentioned, um, that's a statewide, uh, number that individuals can call, um, logic complaint or concern, and then that's kicked down to our level at the local health department. Uh, but they're also at the state level in the process of proposing a, a local joint compliance team, uh, or teams, which would, uh, be made up of all of the entities that, uh, Tom went over, the health department, uh, emergency management, law enforcement, liquor board. And, um, the goal of that would be proactive and complaint-driven compliance checks, like actually going out and doing checks. Um, issuance of the most effective enforcement orders or most effective en- enforcement actions. Um, but really the goal of that would be, um, through the governor's office and through the state, is quick and aggressive enforcement, uh, regarding businesses. Um, again, our approach, as Tom said, has been from the start, educational enforcement. Um, the vast majority of individuals have been, uh, very cooperative. Um, you know, we've really tried to balance, uh, reopening, uh, the economy and getting people out and about, uh, with, uh, you know, complying with the governor's expectations and honestly, uh, for the most part, I think we've done a pretty good job of that. I mean, it's, it's difficult at times and there's some tough decisions that need to be made, but I think we've been able to keep things moving forward here as much as we can.
Earl, um, nine hundred and fifty complaints, that obviously is a lot of, um,
Mm-hmm.
you know, time on you and your staff. I, I'm wondering, does the state provide any kind of funding, additional funding from the state to comply with their mandates?
Not, not spec- not specifically for enforcement, although, uh, if need be, we could take that out of the, um, public health, uh, related cares money that came down.
Okay.
Commissioner, any other comments?
I thank you for the report though. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up, local management board by law revision, Allison.
Hey Jeff, can I ask you something? I've forgotten Commissioner comments. Just see if anybody has any input into it. I keep getting the county, some county residents probably doesn't have anything to do with us. I'm just making sure we don't have a way to help. Saying that they don't have, it's about the internet for the schools, uh, if they live out in the country, don't have internet. Is the, was the county offering, can we offer anything at all? Is there anything in the? Or someone could check on? I just want to make sure I'm telling them there's not much I can do about it, and then we can do something about it.
We, I'll yield to you, it's hard, but we have no legal contract or anything with Antietam Cable, it's a private business.
Yeah, we, we can't force, uh, Antietam Cable to provide service. Um, I do believe that the governor has announced a program to assist with broadband. It looks like Josh has some information on that.
Thank you, Josh.
I hate to, you know, I'm sorry, but I've, I forgot about it.
Sorry.
Josh Neil, Deputy, uh, Division Director of Information Systems. Uh, I've been speaking with the governor's office of rural broadband expansion regarding this. They have a one hundred percent match grant program for expansion into rural areas. The next grant period opens at the end of September. Uh, the representative from the office also told me that the Board of Education applied for and did receive a grant in the amount of one hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars around the bounce. And that may be available through the school board.
So one of, one of the teachers told me if there's a student or family having troubles, to call their principal at that school, which might expedite their request for help.
The school also has a low income program for broadband access, which I don't believe is covered by the grant. I think the grant is for expansion of broadband into rural areas, whereas the, uh, school board's program for lower income, uh, people who might have trouble affording the broadband necessary for, uh, school at home, and they have a separate application.
But you do not have a law on Antietam Cable to tell them they are a private business entity, is kind of what you're hearing, Randy.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think you, I didn't know about the governor's, uh, grant that it's a hundred percent match, so they would contact you think who about that?
Um, there's two way, there's two ways we can run that. Either the county can match the hundred percent funds, uh, to roll out the broadband, or it's possible Antietam Cable might be willing to do so. They may have a certain number of houses per mile required for a stretch to be profitable. And with the hundred percent match, that would lower that number, uh, under a threshold where they would be willing to do that. And so far I haven't advanced the process, uh, to, into speaking to Antietam Cable about what they'd be willing to do.
All right, thank you very much.
Can I ask a question? Do you know, is, so would the broadband only be available during COVID while students are at home learning, or is this something that, you know, even after COVID, the dust settles, broadband access will continue to be available in those areas that otherwise wasn't?
Well, the grant program, I don't believe is related specifically to COVID. It's for rolling out broadband to, uh, areas that are not served because of how sparse the population density is there. So I don't believe it's tied to COVID.
So it could be long term?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you. I will continue back to our agenda with local management board by law revision. Allison can support, introduce the matter. Thank you, Josh.
Sorry Jeff, I wanted to, I, I wanted to try to get it.
It's clear if people need to know, we don't have authority to run Antietam Cable, if they can't, they must be private business.
Good morning, Commissioners. Allison Hart Swarn, Office of Grant Management. Um, today I'd like to make a motion to approve the pro- proposed revisions as presented for the local management by laws. The local management board reviewed and approved the proposed revisions as presented by vote on June nineteenth, twenty twenty. The proposed revisions are technical and not submissive in, yeah, in nature. The proposed revisions pertain to the local management board, membership composition, positions and committees. Changes reflect that the local management board shall have eleven standing ex officio members, of which will now include the local care team coordinator for Washington County, elimination of the board membership committee and treasurer position. Um, any questions, comments?
Commissioners, thoughts? Comments?
I'll motion to approve the revisions to the local management board by laws.
There are a second?
I'll say.
I have a first and a second. Any other comments, discussion? There are none. All of you say aye.
Aye.
All right, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, Chris Boggs, Zimmerman Conservation. Please introduce yourself in your matter.
Good morning. Chris Boggs, Land Preservation, Department of Planning and Zoning. I'm here to present the Zimmerman Crep Conservation Reserve Enhancement Program Easement Project. Uh, project will be over thirty-three point four nine acres on, uh, Real Road and Hancock. Um, we'll be preserving a twenty-three point three six acres of woodland and a little over six acres of hayland, uh, that are in, uh, the, the FSA's Crep, uh, uh, contract program, which we will in turn put an easement on the property using funding from DNR, project open space. Um, this project is similar to some of the other Crep projects we've done. It, uh, puts a permanent buffer or a permanent easement over the stream buffer, and then also adds that matching easement component over the remainder of the land, uh, permanently preserving it. Um, this, uh, this easement also is, uh, is important because it's going to buffer around thirty-two hundred feet of Little Tenawaay Creek. It runs through the property. So that's good. Um, to this point, we've preserved one thousand one hundred forty-four acres of land in Crep easements since the program began in twenty-ten. Uh, FY twenty-one is similar to other, uh, fiscal years where, uh, basically instead of getting a grant, the, uh, we just take it on a project by project basis to DNR, and they give us the thumbs up or thumb, well, I've never gotten a thumbs down, but they tell us whether or not to move forward with the project. So, uh, these are of course a hundred percent state dollars, including the three percent for admin costs and the, uh, one and a half percent for compliance costs that we get with our other DNR programs. And, uh, you know, as, as always, uh, if we reject the, uh, proposal, um, DNR will allocate the funds to another county. So that said, our, my recommended motion is to approve the Ronnie R Zimmerman Crep Easement Project in the amount of ninety-one thousand, four hundred ninety-seven dollars and sixty-six cents over thirty-three point four nine easement acres. Any questions?
How many acres total in Washington County now?
Thirty-four thousand, five hundred.
I got this, uh, question asked to me and I didn't know the answer.
Sure.
So, um, when any of these are, properties are put into permanent easement, does that affect their taxable base?
Uh, it depends the program. Uh, for instance, this program, uh, doesn't affect their taxes. Uh, are you, are you talking about as far as capital gains are concerned?
No, I'm talking about what they've paid property taxes.
Property taxes, no. This program, uh, neither does rural legacy. Our ag district program does give a tax credit to, uh, any landowner that's in that program. And then that tax credit, be- because to be, to apply for Maryland Ag Land Preservation Program easement, you have to already be in an ag district. It's part of our ag board's policy. Uh, so you get an extra bump of tax credit on the house if you get into the, the Maryland Ag Land easement. Um, but yeah, so just our ag, now, you can be in an ag district, but prior to applying for any of these DNR funded programs. So we do have some properties that are getting the tax credit and have also sold an easement to either rural legacy or Crep. But, uh, it depends if you have, see, the Crep easement is ideal for someone who doesn't have qualifying soils to get into our ag district program, because the ag district program, that sometimes is what hamstrings a landowner. A lot of these Crep easements are interested, but they don't have at least fifty percent class one, two and three soils.
Gotcha.
So they just, you know, they, they settle for a Crep easement. So, uh, but yeah, that's kind of how it works.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a great program. We need to continue supporting it, so. But I just, I was asked that question and I'll, I'll be able to.
Yeah, they're.
Dangerous in answering.
Yeah, the only other tax incentives that would apply for these programs would be if, for instance, if a portion of these easements are donated, um, they could apply for, you know, IRS or, or state income tax deductions and, and charitable donations, things like that to help for their income taxes. But as far as property taxes are concerned, uh, the Crep and rural legacy program don't directly address those, uh, or have any effect on them.
Awesome. All right, thank you so much.
Sure thing.
I have a motion to approve the Zimmerman Conservation Reserve Enhancement Program Crep Easement Proposal.
Second? I'll say it's a second. Any further discussion? There are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Next up, Jill Baker. You have three items back to back. Please come forward and introduce.
Be easier with my side.
Oh gee, I only took nine of them.
Yep. Good morning, Commissioners. Um, I do have several of these back to backs, so I'm going to make a generalized statement to begin with, and then I'll get into the specifics of each one. Um, annexation, uh, is an important process for our cities and towns across the state to help promote economic growth, adequate public facilities and fiscal well-being. Uh, while the county has no definitive authority to approve or disapprove an annexation request, it does have the responsibility to review the annexation plan and determine whether or not the proposed municipal zoning is consistent with the existing counting zone, county zoning. Uh, this review is meant to help ensure consistent development patterns in the overall community. Uh, and according to state law, the county may delay development on an annexed parcel for a period of five years if they determine that the land use, uh, permitted in the municipal zoning, uh, if those land uses are substantially different from those under the county zoning, or if the residential density of the proposed municipal zoning exceeds fifty percent or more, uh, of a higher density than that of the existing, existing county zoning. Um, so with that, um.
Jill, let me ask you a question.
Sure.
Is our vote of approval necessary for this to happen immediately, or, or is our vote just part of bureaucratic, bureaucratic system of having all parties informed?
Uh, your vote is to determine basically the consistency of zoning and whether or not development should or should not occur within the next five years on an annexed parcel.
So for clarity, we vote yes, they move forward.
Correct.
If we vote no, hypothetically, what happens then on either one or all three?
Um, they must wait five years before they can, uh, approve development, new development.
Well, they're already developed.
Development that's.
Yes, and that, and I'm going to get into, most of these are already developed, so.
So if we said no, if they're already developed, then what happens? Nothing.
So.
And really the approval was to allow them to exercise zoning authority such that they could. And really, the approval was to allow them to exercise zoning authority such that they could rezone to something that is significantly different than what the existing county zoning would be. So if you vote against express approval, that doesn't mean that the annexation does not occur. It simply means that the municipality may not exercise zoning authority in a way that is materially different from the um zone that exists now for a period of five years.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess my reasoning for answering these questions is I, I did follow this with the meetings, and uh I was a little disappointed. I know it's a very tough decision for the city and everybody needs money, that they couldn't have staggered that in, and that what didn't happen, did it? They staggered in the, over five years? Or, 'cause I heard some of the com- the, the owners wanting, they, okay, we're good, but we need to, can you take baby steps with this to, instead of hitting us with those taxes right away? That didn't happen, so that's, that's why I was asking the do's and don'ts, but.
We really don't have a say in that, uh to be honest. It's, it's really, our only responsibility has to do with whether or not the zoning is consistent, whether or not development is consistent between the two jurisdictions. Um I will tell you this, I did get uh an email from Kathy Marr to help me out here. Um as far as the real estate, uh the real property taxes, um they've been notified that the real property taxes will not occur until July first of twenty-twenty-one. Um at that point is when they will start being billed for the city real property tax. Um so there's a little bit of leeway in there, um not as much as I think they had asked for, but um.
Yeah, I think they wanted to phase in a three or four years or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um so if I may.
So the property owners are okay with the express approval?
They're, they seem okay, Terry, with, I don't have much, with the annexation. They, they'll live with it, that's a better way to put it from what I heard. Now, someone can dispute that, but I listened. But they all, they really wanted to stagger their, their, their taxes out instead of hitting them all in twenty-twenty-one. They want to say, okay, some in twenty-twenty-one, some in twenty-twenty-two.
Like a fee schedule that rises so they're not hit all at home.
And, and the city's, it was, it was a tough decision, I'm sure. They seemed to be leaning that way, but Jill, that didn't happen that way, correct?
It, it did not happen that way. Um and I can expand upon that a little more, Commissioner.
If I'm screwing the story up, please correct me.
No, um.
My other question would be, once that annexed, are there any developments that are bordering the properties that they want to annex that are, that have annexation agreements signed where?
What kind of domino effect does this create?
Yeah, the, the, there might be a parcel that's not in this annexation proposal, but once this annexation occurs, that parcel's, that's in the county only, may be considered for annexation later too by being contiguous. Is there any thought or suggestion of that possibility? Because I've had it all from a couple connecting properties.
Sure. If I could, I'd like to kind of address that a little bit, uh one at a time, because there are, they're in a couple different areas, which can have a different effect. Um the, the first thing to, to address Commissioner Baker's concern about um whether or not the property owners want or or don't want, um the reason these are being annexed now is because those property owners um in previous years agreed to the annexation.
Yeah, but maybe interrupt, they had no other choice if they wanted water in the future, so they, they had to agree no matter what.
That was the decision, that was the decision. They had to wait for their own.
Yeah, so they had, well, they had no other choice. If they wanted to develop that property, they had to agree to the pre-annexation if they wanted water, correct?
So the agreement, yeah, so.
Yeah, so they knew what they were getting into, by the way, by knowing that as well.
So I'm gonna start off with the Coal Road annexation, um which is A twenty-twenty dash zero-three is the, is the um city's reference uh for that. Um as you can see on the map there, um that is the property that um contains the Coles Department Store um and a couple other properties in that uh shopping center. Um that was part of a pre-annexation agreement that was signed, uh I believe in either two thousand four or two thousand five, with the city. Um this became, this property became contiguous um to the city after the city annexed um some of that land you see there in the interchange and along Halfway Boulevard. Um so it does uh meet the contiguous aspect of this. Um they, they did provide the facilities, uh excuse me, the utilities uh for uh public water. Um it's my understanding that this tract is still served by county wastewater and will continue to be served uh by county wastewater. Um the Coal Road annexation has not been formally approved yet. Um it is on the mayor and council's agenda for September twenty-ninth. Um and then um they'll determine their decision at that point. Um to my knowledge, there's not been any discussion um or any issues with those property owners. They knew this was a possibility, they factored it in, um and they accepted the annexation. Um related to the, the zoning uh aspect of this, uh all of these properties are currently zoned business general under the county's rules. The city is proposing to apply a commercial regional zoning. Um they both, both of these zonings uh do provide a variety of similar land uses uh that include business and professional uses, uh office uses, retail, sales and service, uh social and cultural uses, and public administration services. The lone difference that are between these districts is that the city allows for mixed-use buildings in their commercial um regional district, which basically means that the first floor is the retail, and then you can have a second or third floor that's residential. We've talked about doing that in the county zoning districts. Um we have not followed through um on whether we'll permit that or not um in these districts, but.
Is there been any demand for that?
Um on these properties, because they're already improved, I don't know that there will be, no. Um otherwise, throughout the county, um we are seeing some, some small demand for that, but um I think it's kind of experimental at this point, um and it's more relatable to uh the city than it is to the county at this point. So um because all of these parcels are already improved, none of them are seeking to change the existing use of their property, and the likelihood that the existing development would be revised in order to see, in order to obtain some sort of residential density seems fairly low. So it's our recommendation that the express approval be granted for this annexation based on the existing conditions and that the properties are already improved and the majority of uses are similar. Now, you can see on the map there again in terms of uh potential domino effects. Um to my knowledge, I don't think, other than um the Thomas Bennett Hunter that I discussed, um and I think there's a residential subdivision of townhouses um down off of Beckley Road that never came to fruition. Um I think they have a pre-annexation agreement. Other than that, I think those are the only major ones in that area.
What about, Jill, what about the Valley Mall or the trailer, the Mobile Home Park on the opposite side of eighty-one?
Um as far as the rest of the Valley Mall and their out parcels, that is gonna be completely dependent upon their need for water. Right now, we have uh an allocation that works and that they don't need further water. Um if for some reason, let's say the Valley Mall exploded and wanted to add a lot more allocation, the potential is there that they may have to annex to get more allocation.
But otherwise, there's, there's not an annexation agreement in place with the Valley Mall?
No.
Okay.
No, sir. Um so there's your, your potential domino effect. Lakeside is in the same category. They do not have a pre-annexation agreement, but should they want to expand to a point where they would need additional water allocation, they may be required to annex to receive that additional allocation.
And a question here, because of the tax differential, your property being in county only or county and a municipality, our tax revenue will be affected by this. I, I see our CFO squirming back there. Any idea what that dollar amount would be? Because looking, I know the Valley Mall property is our largest single property taxpayer.
It would be substantial if the Valley Mall property would be annexed, because they don't have an agreement, we don't anticipate that happening, correct, Jill?
Yes.
Um or because they don't have an agreement with the city. Um so that's good news. It would be a difference, I mean, the municipal rate is point eight-two-three, county rate's um point nine-two-four.
Nine.
Nine-two-four.
Nine. Yeah.
Sorry, I'm like, oh, I'm blank. Um so there's like point one-one.
Is this on? Okay, sorry. Um so there will be an impact for real estate taxes, but it's not like the county will lose all of our tax revenue. It is a portion of that. Um and so depending on the assessments of these individual properties, I could get you that information in an email later. I'm sure that will be easy to provide. I just don't have it right in front of me. Um so there will be an impact.
If you could provide that, I would appreciate, whether we vote or either way.
Sure, just for information. Yeah, definitely.
Uh would you go ahead and like that for all three annexations, Commissioner, since we're on the topic?
Yes, sure, if it's not too much for you. Thank you.
Okay, so um that concludes my presentation on the first annexation request by the city.
Do you want us to vote for these individually?
Yes, I would, please.
So you're finished with Coal Road?
Yes.
Commissioners, thoughts and comments?
I, I sort of liked the table until I saw all that information on that, just. I would agree with that as well.
And are we required to take any action since the city can move forward with the annexation? They would just, uh, uh, no action would essentially be a no vote?
I don't know.
It's just need decided today.
It does not need to be decided today.
Okay, so we have time to get that additional information, but I do enjoy the presentation and the facts.
As to whether the question would be, if you, if you don't take any action at all, it would have the effect of not granting express approval, which means that they would not be able to exercise zoning authority to zone something that is substantially different than what it already is now. Now, that may not be a practical problem because these parcels are already developed.
So they said we don't take no action, they continue with what's going on there currently.
That's right.
So.
And it's still, it'd still be annexed and the taxes would still be done, you know, to the cities. So.
Now, the five years is for the zoning authority. It doesn't have anything to do with the taxes or.
All right, I hear three tables. There we go. Terry, table. Gentlemen, table.
I mean, it, it's fine, I.
So you got a first and a second, Crystal, for your minutes?
First and a second, the table.
Let me ask one more question. On the TBH property, Thomas Bennett Hunter, does that affect them as far as develop, uh zoning or anything if, by? That's undeveloped land.
Technically, um I'd have to check on that, because it's my understanding that we are proceeding with the development process right now with them, because they're out there grading and doing work, and the city has granted them, I do believe, uh a water allocation.
Yeah, we approved it in planning, I remember that.
Yes, um so I think.
I wouldn't want to screw them up.
I know. I'll, I'll have to check on this, because I think we agreed in principle that because the development process started in the county, that we would continue um whatever permits we had in place through, under county um regulations. Um but as far as the actual building permits, um I'll have to check and see what the agreement is between the city and the county on that. Um it could potentially um throw a wrench into that process.
Let me clarify the motion. Is the motion to table the first annexation, or we can get information on all three?
Uh let's just, let's, let's do them individually, I would think, because I would probably not, I would probably be okay with.
All right, the first one is, I, I hear we have a motion to table the first one, which is Coal Road, A dash twenty-twenty dash O-three. Is that it? Is that correct? Any questions, comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, first one's tabled. Jill, would you proceed with the next one?
Um so I'm going to try to expedite, because I think I'm behind here on time. I'm gonna assume the same conditions on the second one, if you want to table that. I'm gonna assume the same conditions unless you want me to present something different.
That's also developed.
Yes. Is that okay with?
So just to clarify, Jill, we're only looking at the property in yellow? With the yellow border, is that correct?
Correct. This, uh, the second annexation request from the city of Hagerstown deals with the Valley Mall out parcels. Uh that includes um the storage facility, the Valley World, um the hotels that are out there, and the Hagerstown diner that is out there.
So if we didn't take action on the first presentation, we couldn't take action on this, because then that wouldn't be.
You absolutely could if you'd like.
We could, okay.
This is separate, this is a separate issue.
Okay.
Um if you, would you prefer me to go ahead and? I'm sorry.
No, I think it's the same as the first one.
I'd like it to be tabled.
Tabled, yeah.
So a motion to table it?
Motion to table it.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Um third one?
Okay, the third?
Jill, just one, I want to ask one more question on the third one.
Yes. Sure. Yes.
They're moving out of the city, correct? They're, they're on.
Yes, it is currently located in the city.
They're moving out of the city, out to there, and the proposal is annexation. That's undeveloped land. We already talked about the zoning. What's the taxes say that they're in the city? Do we, might be a question for Sarah to, how does that? It's no really, is the tax base the same?
Their assessed value.
Asses, is it, their assessed value um is the same, and then they'll have to pay taxes on the county's rate and then the city of Hagerstown's rate, um which I think I can find if you give me a second.
No, that's okay, I'll just, yeah, you can do that, and I, we're waiting for you to come back with that stuff.
Sure, I can.
All right.
So uh the third request by uh the city of Hagerstown is the annexation request for Thomas Bennett Hunter. Their reference number is A twenty-twenty dash zero-five. Um as it shows up there on the screen, again, this is uh further down on Halfway Boulevard. I believe the access to the property is actually off of Hopewell Road. Um this is new development. Um the parcel was previously unimproved. They are out there doing grading work and so forth now. Um this was a subject of a rezoning by the county commissioners uh a year or two ago, um with the intention that the cement company would be moving out there. Um so we kind of knew this was, was going to happen. Um currently, the zoning on the property uh under that rezoning case is industrial general. The city is likewise proposing to apply their industrial zoning to the property. When you look at the two districts, um the variety of uses are extremely similar. Um and that include light and heavy industrial, industrial manufacturing, office space, and warehousing. Uh neither of these districts, either the cities nor the counties, allows for any new residential district. Um as far as domino effect, again, um I don't think there's any other parcels in the direct vicinity of this one um that have a pre-annexation agreement um at this point, so I don't know that there is a domino effect. You can see that the city did annex, um I believe it's Tractor Supply to the north along Hopewell Road. Um so the same, the, the same criteria apply that if these properties uh either one, develop and need water, or two, want to expand and need additional water, they may be required to annex into the city to receive those facilities. Um.
I, I think I'd be more apt just for conversation to, uh prone to being okay with this one, because I'd be scared that, because we're not sure if we could throw a potential wrench into this, and it's undeveloped land already, they're not operating there yet, but they've already per- and we're not a hundred percent sure we wouldn't screw up, and I hate to, you know, with all that effort. And I hate to, you know, with all that effort and money and moving.
And the zoning uses are pretty much identical.
Yeah, so.
Um, it's not like this is, this isn't the way it would develop in the county. Matter of fact, it started this way in the county, so it makes sense that it will continue that way in the city.
I'm inclined to agree with Commissioner Wagner, um, because I remember that rezoning issue when the property was purchased from Chief, I believe. Um, do you know, Jill? Um, it, it says that, um, construction is already taking place and it will, construction will continue under the counting permitting process with significant city input, and I don't know if it's word exactly that way, but, um, go- going forward, we will still provide the, the county building permit, we'll continue to oversee that process, or does that switch over to the city?
That's a good point.
Um, as far as the actual physical building permit, I don't know if that, how that's gonna work because the city has approved the, this annexation. Um, it'll take forty-five days before it becomes effective. I'm not sure of exactly what that date is, but it'll be sometime, uh, likely in late October, um, maybe the beginning of November. Um, so I think it's gonna depend on the progression of the developer and how quickly they wanna move. Um, we're doing our best between the two, the two jurisdictions to keep them running smoothly. Um, so I know there's a lot of communication, I know there's a lot of coordination and most of the city and county's, um, regulatory authority is pretty much the same when you're talking about building codes and grading plans and that kinda stuff. We're pretty much identical because a lot of that is run under state codes. So, um, like I said, there might be a couple little things like the city requiring sidewalks or something else. Forest conservation has already been handled by the county, um, so that's kind of out of the way. But at this point, I know that we are working diligently to keep this project streamlined, on time and moving forward in whoever's capacity that is.
Commissioners, looks like this might be one that we might consider approving, so we make sure we assure that development goes. Commissioner Baker, any comment?
I'd motion to approve the annexation of Thomas Bennett Hunter parcel.
Second.
A first and a second, any further discussion?
Well, it's to grant express approval.
Express approval. Thank you for the correction, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, five oh, thank you, Jill. Next up, Jill, you're back in, please introduce yourself again for the record and the, yes, you.
Thank you, uh, again, Jill Baker, uh, the director of the Department of Planning and Zoning. Um, the final thing that you're gonna find here related to annexations is through the town of Hancock. Um, you can see there's, uh, four parcels, I believe, along East Main Street, um, that you can see that's up on your map now. Uh, I believe there's only one parcel that privately owned. The rest of these parcels are owned by the town of Hancock, so they're interested in pulling in the land that they own into their municipal limits. Um, I believe the property owner, the, the private property owner that's involved, um, is in agreement with this. Um, I do believe the annexation has been approved at this point by the town. Um, the zoning districts are, I believe we have highway interchange on that property right now. Um, and the town is proposing, I believe, general commercial, I think. Um, we find those to be substantially similar to one another. Um, again, several of these parcels are already improved, there is no discussion of changing the use, um, or additional development at this point, I think the town was just interested in bringing in land that they own into the municipality. And there was just one private property owner kind of in the middle of that. Um, given that the zonings are substantially similar, um, we would recommend, staff would recommend, um, express approval of this annexation for the town.
Was there any opposition anywhere for that?
Not that I am aware of.
Commissioners, discussion, motion?
But basically the town owns it and they just wanna bring it into the town.
And there was one parcel that was kinda sandwiched between them, that was a private parcel.
And that's, and that person is okay with that too.
And they've worked that out. They've worked that out.
Good. Hearing new discussion, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll motion to approve, a second.
I have a first and a second. Any further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, five oh, thank you very much, Jill.
Thank you, and I'll bring those other ones back for discussion after Sarah and I complete that analysis for you. Thank you.
Next up, twenty twenty census, and who's making that presentation? Hey, that looks like Kim, Kim Buchanan, Ms. Kenzer, is that who, who's there?
Hello, do we go ahead or? Am I good?
You're good.
Okay, I can't hear very well, so I'm sorry if I have to say what. So, um, I checked this morning and, um, Washington County is at seventy point three for our self-response rate, which is great. In the twenty-four county juristic, and jurisdictions in Maryland were in the fourteen that have reached their twenty-ten self-response rate, so that's great. Um, our total response rate for twenty-ten is seventy-five percent, so we can really do a big push here in the last month of this census, crossing our fingers that maybe we'll get an extra month. Um, I, I know we can get to the seventy-five percent. And, um, I know that, um, Kirk wanted me to mention that on August fifth, Washington County tied for third in the nation for the highest daily response rate increase. So, um, that's really kinda great for our, you know, our small county, so. Um, and we did achieve that, um, self-response rate, um, for the two thousand ten on August twenty-fourth, so we've had that for a little while. And I know, in talking to Jennifer, um, she said we're going up about.
A tenth a day.
A tenth.
So we could expect, uh, another three percent increase in the self-response rate over the month of September. And that's, like I said, the self-response rate, not the numerators going out knocking door to door.
And I know right now they're really pushing, they're out there, they're going to people's houses and they're also doing the group quarters this month, which is all of the, like, say for example, CAC's homeless shelter. They're doing those counts this month as well too, so those will probably take it up a little higher as well. Um, I just wanted to mention some of the a, um, the efforts that we've done as far as the complete count committee during this time. Um, we did four months of bus ads, we did a very large marketing campaign with the Herald Mail that included website, email, newspaper, directed TV, Facebook, Instagram and Snapchat. So we, we felt with, with the virus that we, um, couldn't do our outreach as we were gonna do, so we do a marketing campaign and reach everybody that way. So we, that was very successful. We do social media posts Monday, Wednesday and Friday, we've been doing them since March with the help of the city and we get a lot of response on those and we all share them, um, we've done some advertising with the library and their curbside pickups. We just finished doing a P O box campaign, so there were about seventeen hundred post office boxes that had not received anything from the federal government for the census. So we, um, did postcards and we sent them out to those seventeen hundred post office boxes in Washington County to kinda make sure everybody got at least one notification. Um, we've been to various outreach events, mostly giving them information because they were drive up or drive through outreach events. Um, we've done some speaking engagements, some different podcasts. And we do have the mobile question, question assistance centers that are available, which they will go if they're needed anywhere. And they set up, they explain the census, they help people, um, do the census, they have computers and things like that. So I know for sure Funkstown and Clear Spring have done them, they've had them come, so they're available if anybody needs them. Jennifer just gave me this, um, I guess the only, there's four towns, Williamsport, Hagerstown, Hancock and Clear Spring that have not, um, gotten to their two thousand ten self-response rate. Now, Hagerstown and Williamsport, they were part of the, um, post office box mailing campaign that we just completed, so hopefully that'll give them a little push.
Commissioners, have any questions for us?
You said the self-report rate was seventy point three?
Mm-hmm.
What's the total, I guess?
Well, that's kinda hard to say because they don't really, they don't really add that to the people that got questionnaires and didn't, if someone didn't do it online, everybody was sent a questionnaire in the mail. If they mailed that back in, they haven't really added those to everything yet.
Okay.
Um, the ones that they have would be included in that self-response rate, but we, we're of the understanding there's a big lag with that as far as, you know, day to day updating that.
And it doesn't include the group, group quarters or the people, they've already gone door to door and had them complete the census on their device.
Okay.
So with this being the first year that they've done online, they're really focusing on that self-response rate.
Okay, thank you.
So what's your message to somebody who's watching and hasn't filled out the census yet?
Do it right away, please, I mean, we, we, you know, it's, it's this time that we're, we're dealing with, um, the numbers that we're getting right now for the cen, for the census and the fact that it affects so much funding coming into our county. It's gonna affect us for ten years. So in three or four years, when hopefully this is, uh, bad memory, um, it, if, if we don't, if people don't fill out their census, it's gonna still be affecting us.
The state of Maryland, um, Department of Planning's slogan is, don't delay, fill your census out today. So that's what they've been going off since the date was moved to September thirtieth.
Is there, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, for somebody who hasn't done it and thinks, oh my God, it's gonna be a questionnaire that takes me forty-five minutes. What, what's the actual experience of filling out the?
It, it's very simple, um, I believe we have, I think there's five in my house right now, who knows, but, um, it took me about ten minutes, less than ten minutes, it's very simple.
And it's completely confidential, which is another concern that people always have, that their information's gonna be shared. The Census Bureau can't share this information with anyone and they're not gonna ask any banking or credit information at all. They will ask whether you rent or own your home that you're living in, but that's pretty much it.
Yeah.
So, it is confidential, they're not allowed to disclose any information, it's just for statistics reporting and funding for the next ten years.
Thank you.
Is there a way to make a change on the census if it's already been submitted, people move and, um?
No, what they really want is where you were on April first.
Okay.
So I had somebody just ask me that question the other day, they said they moved since April first, should they do it again? Somebody came to their house, I said, no, where you were was, at April first was fine and maybe they were coming to the house because the previous tenants hadn't filled theirs out.
Okay.
Obviously, the goal's a hundred percent, but that's probably not achievable. What, what do you realistically think that you're gonna end up with, eighty-five percent, eighty percent, ninety?
I've always kind of had eighty percent in my head, eighty to eighty-five, I think, um, I think we're really close. And I think if we can do a big push in this last month, um, I've had some or organizations reach out and say they wanna do some things this month, so. I mean, people can be taking the census up to the thirtieth and it'll count, so.
Right, and towns have shown interest in getting the mobile assistance questionnaire unit in their town to help their residents that don't have the computer access. Um, or lost their, their hard copy census to help fill it out, so there is some interest in the ta, from the towns.
I think one of the things that we've noticed is people don't really understand why the census is important. And, you know, we, we like to tell them that it affects everyone, it touches everyone from roads to schools to public assistance to to, to lunch programs, it, it affects everyone, there's not one person in this community that's not gonna touch and have an effect on if we don't get a good count, that we can't bring those dollars in here.
How is the, um, that response rate calculated, obviously, like, in the percentage or numerator, how many questionnaires you have back with number of hu- household members on there? It, it sounds like the denominator's already known and that's the population, right?
It's the number of addresses.
Number of addresses.
Is that actually what they go off of?
Okay.
Um, several years ago, I was responsible for validating all the addresses in Washington County. And sending them back to the Census Bureau so they knew where to mail the census questionnaires in twenty twenty.
Okay.
Um, and that included new construction, um, and includes everything through about January first of twenty twenty. So they send out via address and then the population comes back and is exponential from there.
Okay.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Thank you.
Ladies, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for all of your efforts in coordinating this.
Thank you for keeping in touch with me, Kirk, cause I appreciate the updates here and there.
Thank you again, Commissioners, seeing that's our last agenda item, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Just to get a closed session, is there any second?
Second.
First and second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Closed session, we good?